Is your, uh, open forms first?
Oh, yeah.
Actually, we forgot about that first.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
There's not usually anybody here for that, so we're not...
That's okay, I know, I know. So, uh, first of all, so again, my name is Shelby Marshall. Uh, apologies for not being here. Uh, more recently, I am the Select Board's Liaison. So, the board, uh, as it, as much as it can to expand with, um, uh, identifies members of the board who have particular interests in various committees and boards. And so, Patrick Holtz was the prior liaison to this, uh, board. And so, he and I flip flops and responsibly, so I am that liaison. So, my job is really to support the council. If there are matters that need to, or will be coming before the board to provide an update to the board and help in any way I can, you know, to kind of facilitate, obviously, you guys will be the assistant town manager as well. Um, but however I can be. I do have a specific item I just wanted to lay from a board member. Um, so, uh, Select Board Member Alan Edinburgh asked that, um, I make the council aware that the affordable housing cost wishes to come before the council on aging to talk about matters of affordable housing for seniors specifically here in Westboro. They wish to solicit the council's, um, feedback and ultimately support for increasing, uh, senior affordable housing here in Westboro and inclusive of that here on Rogers Room. Um, so, uh, through the chair, um, if, I just wanted to make you and, and the council aware and, um, they would like to come to a future meeting. Okay?
They have been here before, so...
So, but their work is, uh, no. Their work is increasing. They're now purchasing property, so, um, good, good time. Okay?
Alright.
Jim, did you have anything specific or are you going to stay with us?
Um, no, I'll, well, I guess I'll take a moment. Um, just a reminder, we're getting into, um, the thick of preparations for town meeting, which will be Saturday, March 25th at 9:00 AM at the high school. Um, you can follow along the Select Board meetings. Um, they are talking about many of the issues and things coming up. The draft version of the warrant is available on the town's website. I think the latest version, we may have thirty-three articles. Um, but Finance Committee is also meeting regularly to discuss the financial articles. So, um, if you're looking to follow along, many of these meetings are recorded and available by Westboro TV. And then, um, as I said, the more draft versions of that are available on the town's website.
We all meet back at town on this March 25th, 9:00 AM.
How come so late?
Right in center. And I do, I would like to, uh, move on to our... Secretary Smith, Nancy, and you, because everybody had an opportunity to agree.
No, I think, no, I think we were talking about the different, like, some people who are eighty won't come to the senior center because they're not living on, kind of thing. But then we've also got people who live fifty-five or fifty-two, so... So, it's better, I know it needs to be really, really different. Large range of religious.
And the same on that page three down further. Instead of large area of ages, change it to range.
Yeah.
Nancy, yes, and, uh, Newshank Councilor, Bill LaPrada, please, you have a copy of it. Please, that related to the, uh, question about what is that, the seniors' quarters? And, uh, my recollection is that, uh, we were comment with, uh, something that was going to be very, very obvious. And it'd be very, uh, quiet, we're working on it. And, uh, it wasn't discussed openly.
As, as was very...
Will we revisit that?
So, just to, to, to get concerned about the WCS, part of the issue. About the WCS, about issues. It's not about the WCS, uh, WCS, issues.
And Alan said before you opened the meeting, you have to be aware. Name, name, to them. It's not like you do it every day, it's just a broadcast. And therefore, this is, this is totally discussion. If somebody wanted to know that, please try that, there you go. That's the news, that's it. Try it, check it back next door. Okay, are there any other issues, changes to the minutes? May I have a motion to accept the call? The petition, the, the... Second. All in favor?
With the correct answer.
Yes.
Would you adjust on the student vote?
Yes. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay. Projects.
Yeah, well, this is going to be interesting next couple of months. Um, I just can kind of piggyback on about the, um, the buses. We have a very large, I probably have a thousand dollars worth of bills in my drawer from last week's trying to fix the bus. And the part that they had, or from Detroit, is going to cost about another thousand dollars. As you can see, over there maintenance line in the budget, we don't have that many. I anticipate a, um, visit to, um, Finance Committee to ask for transfer equipment for this year. And it's only February that's going to be about, so... But the rest of it will be, like, so far.
Our must-essential, important part of the services that we are to deal is in our best interest. To keep the three buses on the road. Uh, we are also, having received and denied to buy another bus. And we do it to move forward. I feel on that issue. I would not want my eighty, ninety, or a hundred-year-old family member driving on a bus that's eighteen years old, twenty-four condition, low condition. And I think we need to speak strongly about that. And buses on the road, they play a very important role in this town transportation. Buses from forty-eight to thirty. That's my opinion about it. They provide a very important service. And we...
This part of the repair, the discussion, is still happening there. But the, this, we will repair, the has to be done on the, the second of the two new buses.
Yeah, it's the uppermost stage, and Stuart's been checking with him pretty much every, like, week. Just waiting for the piece to be made and sent there from India.
This, this is the second bus, I mean, it's not eighteen-year-old.
No, 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 no. But, so, well, let's keep going. Yeah. I think we probably did the update on the survey, but...
Um, so, the last conversation I had with our, um, lead consultants at UMass Boston regarding the survey, they were digging into the over fifteen-hundred responses that were received back. Uh, their expectation was by the time everything was input, because they got most of those back in paper format, so they needed to enter all of those responses, start doing all of the analysis, pull everything together. We are still on track for a, um, probably mid to late March, uh, preliminary draft will be shared. Um, and then, as we had planned initially, there would be some opportunity for some back and forth before the report is finalized. But they said they had some really good data, had a lot of good feedback from the focus groups and the interviews, so they, um, are pleased to be right on track and where we expected them to be. One thing we've been trying to remind folks, we knew from the get-go when we entered into the contract with our partners at UMass Boston, the study was not going to be complete ahead of this town meeting. So, we knew that we weren't going to have anything on the warrants. Um, we will need some time to have some discussion around priorities, come up with an implementation plan. So, we knew, um, you know, even had the survey been done, or the report been done this month, we were on too tight of a time frame. So, um, I just, some folks have seemed a little concerned, but I remind them, this was the plan all along, we're not behind. So, looking forward to that.
But I didn't, I, I, looking at my book, I felt we were going to get some preliminary connection, like you mentioned.
Um, I didn't see that. When I was, I went back and looked after my conversation with her, and I think because the surveys came in through December, they, really, it's, um, December, January into February that they're doing the, the data entry. So...
Okay, so, I, I, I remember that they were late, that they had been working out.
Might have been in the early rounds. Yep.
We did send, and the guy who earned that third draft, I believe, just, just dropped.
That might have been what our initial timeframe was, and then they helped us come up with a final plan as a producer. Sure.
So, not, uh, you might...
So, we're hoping mid to late March is what they committed to. So, and, um, they're well aware, I think what we had built in were a couple of in-person presentations, but then we'll also have an opportunity, you know, as a group to probably have some preliminary discussion, offer some feedback, and then we will make sure, um, as we do with many of our studies and, and some of our projects, we'll make sure that this is widely shared with the entire community. I think that probably gets us right around what we were looking for. It's an extremely strong response rate, um, but I think it's, you know, I'm, I'm not quite sure, um, ultimately where it ends up. They will let us know that, they know exactly how many went out and how many came back, so... Um, I'm hoping maybe between, you know, when I last talked to her and got that number, they've got a few more in maybe, but ultimately, it was a very good response rate.
Yeah, so this, I don't know how many people there are between fifty-five and sixty, but from sixty upwards, about almost forty's a hundred, so, uh, figure it out.
We're hoping for about fifteen percent of the, the number.
The saga of the new buses. So, as of right this minute, the big bus, which is bus number one for future reference, is the only bus we have that's operational. Um, it almost wasn't operational a week ago Wednesday when the muckler blew. God bless Dana, he fixed it for Thursday morning because the office grocery shoppers, you know, it was... When David ever texted him, David goes, "I hate texting you this stuff because it scares me." It's like, nope, I took it in stride, I just, you Dana would come to the rescue, what could you do to get it? Um, so that bus is on the road every day. Um, David, Brad, and Kevin are, um, trading off different days with it. Um, so everybody at least gets one day or a day and a half every week. So, that's the only one. The second bus, which is the one that's up in Rooster, is still up in Rooster. Um, I've had several conversations with Jim Stewart, and he has called, like, he's now the fleet manager. And he has called up there pretty much every week to get an update, and every week it's been the same, answer to the question that, really, the case, which I don't know, I could hurry that along, but whatever. The third bus, which is the eighteen-year-old one that is, is limping along. Uh, they've had trouble with the brakes. They have, um, really been scratching their heads and tried to fix several different things on it, thinking that might be it. But what they've come to the conclusion is that anti-lock brake mechanism, which they've had to order from Detroit. Um, and so, I anticipate that might be here sometime this week. They said for the five days. So, as soon as that comes and they get that in there in May, they, um, have, um, use of that first bus again for. But it's, it's eighteen years old, it's got over a hundred and forty thousand miles on it, it's not going to last forever. So, so that's the status with our vehicles right now. I have to say that the drivers have been awesome. I can tell they're all very tired by the end of the day. Um, I think tomorrow they have fourteen people just, just to pick up for the party. They've had seventeen to pick up just for soup last week, so they're, they're busy. And, um, you know, we've had to say no. When Kevin left, um, the Highlands to come tour for us, um, the management done with the Highlands said, "We'll just call the senior center now." And they hired a new driver, and so the driver went ahead and broke it for it. But they expected that we were going to take them to some church that a whole bunch of them go to in Shrewsbury for nine o'clock service on Friday morning, and this and that, and so, we cannot, first of all, the bus isn't on the road until nine o'clock, but second of all, we cannot possibly add... I mean, I don't want to say no, but I don't, I don't know how we can say yes. So, um, we've kind of had to temper it just to local doctor appointments. Mary Ellen's volunteers have been awesome, getting people up to Rooster and Marburg and such for doctor's appointments because I can't even send the bus out of town to do something like that because it's too busy. You know, Bob's been, Bob's been getting people back and forth to the doctor over the last few weeks. Um, we're making it work, but it's not easy. That's the story about the new buses right now, so... If you have any connections with someone in Elkhorn, Indiana, please use them. Get them to make the, the roof for my bus because... I, when I talked to M H Q, which is the state, um, they've got the state bid, so we don't have to go through all the bidding and all that stuff. And I asked them about leasing, and they said they don't do that, and they didn't know of anybody who did, who leased vehicles that size. I, yeah. Um, Jim also did a little research and found a smaller-sized vehicle that holds the same amount of people. And he was going to do some more research and get back to me, but I haven't heard from him in a quarter to this meeting. But we didn't have to, um, order. So, he was going to do some of the research. It still, it still is, uh, wheelchair-equipped, and it's also, I think, it can hold three to ten thousand years. But it's not as big as our... It looks like a really big SUV and stuff, so he's going to investigate that, see what we can do with that. So, this is, you know, a lot of moving pieces to this. Well, some pieces are moving, others are just sitting still somewhere. Um, but we're working on it. Well, the problem with the school is all the spring sports are starting and all that stuff. I did call, um, I left Mary in a, a message, those, they were going out, friends and their friends, and told her I'd put that door sometimes, to see if we could, especially for Thursdays, because where for shopping is just, it's a nightmare. So, but I really, I mean, I, I put it back.
This, uh, right, the lease question, I think you, you were really suggesting renting as a, as a, a long-term lease?
Well, not, you know, or, I mean, we know why the school does, but to lease their buses, obviously, they, they, they turn old, it's only a couple of years, two, three years. So, uh, to my small mind, I'm thinking, you know, why not do the same thing with the buses?
But then we have to come, where are we going to get the money to pay for that? Where are we going to get the money to pay the bills?
The person that likes it, obviously.
It's kind of late for that, so...
But I did, I, I was going towards the rental, I mean, just for short-term, you rent, uh, buses with the future?
Like I said, when I had asked them at M H Q about that, they said no, that they don't do that. So, then maybe, like I said, Jim was going to do some research, twenty percent street stock now, so I'm going to, I'm going to do that. So, we need to get...
Do you know what you're saying?
Yeah, I, yeah, Alma and I met last week, and we talked about the, um, the situation, so just a couple of things. We do recognize the importance of providing transportation for a variety of different functions for a need and realize the impact of having two buses off the road at the same time. So, um, one thing I do want to address, no one should have any concern. If a bus is being driven and seniors are being afforded the opportunity to ride the bus, it is absolutely safe for it to be on the road. There is no circumstance under which I would have any reservations about riding it myself or having a loved one on a bus, so I just want to be clear on that point. The repairs that are, we're waiting on, um, with the bus, the, the EBS brake system will be repaired. That will be roadworthy again. Mindful that it's an eighteen-year-old bus, maintenance increases, the cost of maintaining it, the frequency, those things will continue to happen. So, is it prudent to begin exploring replacing it? Absolutely. Understanding that there is funding available dedicated for the purchase of buses to provide transportation. There's also a capital planning process that regardless of funding source, this would fall under that process, and we just completed that process. So, Alma and I have talked about starting to put together an approach for the replacement. Unfortunately, right now, if you order anything, if anybody's thought about a vehicle in their own life, you probably know slim pickings on the lot, and you may be waiting, um, a lengthy amount of time. We're seeing with some of the apparatus that fire and police are purchasing, it's well over a year wait. We anticipate that to be the same wait for a bus here. So, again, going back to, it becomes critical to get the two vans, the two buses back on the road because we know, even if we placed an order in the near term, we could be waiting for another year. We also talked about exploring the possibility of a rental or a shorter-term lease to have something available, um, understanding the impact of two buses being off the road. So, we're exploring those things. Um, one of the, the thoughts, too, we're about to get the Senior Needs Assessment pack. Um, we do know there were some questions on the survey around transportation needs. I think we can also take a look at, we have an opportunity when, um, you know, if we're going to purchase a new bus, to really determine what best suits our needs. And I think some of that could be informed by what we hear back from the survey, as well as by doing kind of a deep dive into the data that we have on the current ridership. One of the other things, the bigger bus does require that the driver have a commercial driver's license. Um, there are new rules around obtaining that in Massachusetts and actually across the country. And I do believe the cost is now in the thousands of dollars for someone to obtain a C D L. So, I think we just need to factor that in, that as we move forward and hire drivers in the future, um, it may be more challenging to hire drivers who have a C D L. We're seeing that just trying to hire for positions in town that require that for full-time, competitive positions. So, that's in the back of my mind as well. So, I think what Alma and I have talked about is really stepping back, looking at what the needs are, making an informed decision before the senior center goes forward with replacing, um, the van, but acknowledging that eighteen years, you know, it's time to start, to start having those conversations and start putting a plan in place, um, with the benefit of having the funding available. It could have as a very generous donation to our, to our companies. So, I do think in, in the course of our conversation last week, one of the more immediate things was to look at, and we look beyond M H Q, the availability of something short-term, either a lease or a rental. Um, you know, it may not be quite as large, but it may alleviate some of the pressure on, you know, one driver, one van, out all day, every day. So, that's, I think, very lucky.
Give us an idea of what the capital, what the process is relative to that. If funding is not the issue, if you have...
Right, but we updated, the town updated its fiscal management policies a few years ago. Two years ago now. And included in that was update of our capital policy. And if a purchase meets capital criteria, over a certain dollar amount, a certain useful life, regardless of funding source, it comes into the capital process. We're still figuring out exactly how that works in this situation. It's more bringing the project, it's really full transparency of items that the town is purchasing. Again, recognizing there is a funding source, but that's still a significant amount of money being invested from a transparency standpoint, pulling it into this process is really important.
So the putting process is trying to determine whether the need is real or the time period in which it should be placed or...
In some cases, it's feedback related.
Well, I was just gonna say, so one thing to be aware of is that the capital planning process is actually beautifully detailed on our town's website under the budget section. So if you go to the town's budget, just, this doesn't answer your direct question, but it explains who's on the committee, how does the committee work, when does the committee need, the criteria for items going on the capital expenditure list. And actually, we've increased that timeline. Kim has spent a tremendous amount of time along with committee members really kind of updating that whole process as far back two years ago, asking the select board. And to really not just look out like ten years, but to look out thirty. So where are we at?
We're all working for it.
Yeah, so it really is intended to give taxpayers and apartment heads a sense of like, whether your long-term request and then, and so that, you know, we can budget just like you're living in a house, right? My roof is this many years old, my hot water heater is this, you know, sort of your budgeting accordingly. So it's right, the budget information is right on the website. If anyone needs help, I'm happy to help do that. Our town manager, assistant town manager, they'll walk you through that. But it is a very kind of prescriptive process. So you have to submit documents. Here's what the request is for, here's what the needs were, and that is done by, really by the department heads more so than committees.
And it's a five-year outlook, so the idea is things like vehicle purchases. Yes, you might have to shift things around because something doesn't last quite as long as you hoped it would, or it's running great and you can delay a purchase a year or two. Typically, we're looking at a five-year outlook. So the idea is those projects that are in the out-years, or as you move up each year, your capital planning process, you pretty much know what they're going to be funding in the coming years. The idea here, understanding a bus is a significant investment. In the bulk of that investment, the funding source is identified through the different act rates. However, it has implications for things such as staffing and, you know, we pay for the insurance and other things like that. So again, just stepping back to understanding, it's not always just the cost of purchasing the item, but there are some questions on that, you know, suggested things to address in the capital submission about operational support for these things. Additionally, I think we're trying to get away, while the minibus is really directly serve the needs of seniors and the programs and services that are offered here, it's trying to get away from doing things in the vacuum, really being able to step back, again, look at broadly how the town is providing a variety of services to a wide variety of communities. So if it's in the, if it's in the process, which the process is not new. We've had a capital planning process for decades. The idea is, the capital committee is really not the committee that's deciding how things are funded. The projects are coming more almost for them to look at based on merit. And sometimes they raise some questions that quite frankly, department heads have found really helpful, things that they haven't thought of, just in terms of, many of those capital items are actually an article on the warrant. Something like the minibus wouldn't necessarily have to move forward on the warrant because of the identified funding source. But we are still trying to put some transparency and process around it. So to that, I think the answer to your question, the capital committee isn't the committee that gives the thumbs up or thumbs down on funding source. It's a consideration. But it's more really looking, stepping back and what's everything that the town is providing and purchasing and looking at it more than that.
But those are factors, if there's a, let's say, some grant opportunity, that would be part of, that would be part of a presentation to the capital expenditures committee of awareness grants. The grant is, you've got the number, right? And this is typically, you know, so that's a potential match or a resource that we'd be available for. In this case, it's a little bit different because it sounds like, I'm not terribly familiar, but between six thousand, it sounds like there's a dedicated amount of money specific for transportation needs. I think ultimately, it's a determination, transportation needs doesn't necessarily just mean a bus, right? It's a broad category. So to the council, you'd have to determine how best to utilize that money. But then to Kim's, there's a factor of from a staffing perspective and any other, I mean, other operational considerations.
Do you think there's any buses, there are too many buses in here, aren't there?
I do not know. And honestly, that is a quite, so just as an example, that's the type of question the capital committee might pose. Is there an opportunity to share resources? The bulk force was looking for a new tractor and that comes out of money that the bulk force makes. There's no tax impact, but somebody raised a question. Is there any opportunity to share a tractor with either the W P W or the schools? So those are the types of questions coming through the capital committee. So I think we are working on it. Alma and I met last week for quite a while and talked about sort of identifying our immediate need is to see if we can do something on a short-term, potentially temporary basis. And then understand that we would likely have both of the vans, the buses that are off the road returned into service safely, hopefully, you know, when the parts come in. And then you would also be at the same time planning for the replacement of the oldest bus. And then identifying the other two, you know, one would be likely to be looking to replace that.
Can I just ask a question on the transportation? Is there any consideration by the council on how to help residents, given the crunch of transportation right now, on how to utilize the Via transport system? It's a very low-cost, local option here, supported by the W R T A. Those are the vans that go around town, they're white, with red and blue. It does require some use of technology. But I'm wondering if, you know, whether it's individuals using their technology or wondering if there, it would be a training session for those interested in using that service as an additional service. I do believe it also runs on Saturday, which would be an enhancement to the transportation that the town offers to without some Asian counseling. So I just put that out there for consideration. I've driven in them myself, they're very clean, they're very safe. They do go out of town. It doesn't necessarily mean that they go to Worcester, but they do go out of town for appointments. And it is kind of on demand, so you may... It does require some use of technology. Yep? Yep, yeah, no, they may not, but I guess until we ask them, you know, and until we present that training and offer that for them, I don't know. I'm not suggesting that the council agent be the scheduling agent for Via. No, I understand. No, no, and that's all I'm suggesting. And there is definitely some, you know, but, and again, I'm gonna make this simple. If you guys know another law, right, so she comes here a lot. Like if she needed that, and she would not be probably uncomfortable with using her app. But I could be there for her. If I knew that she needed to, she could ask me and there may be other... And you don't have to be here at Westboro as a, you know, a family member to help with that either. So I just put that out there, given the crunch and given that type of transportation.
We do, we do.
But I guess I'm just, you know, gonna train the people. That's all, that's all. I'm just saying, they have to train me first. That's all. So I put that for the council's consideration.
Thank you.
I do think it's interesting because I was told after Via started in Westboro that a Monday and Wednesday transportation by the W R T A had been suspended. Several people told me that. And I got an email on Friday from the W R T A asking why people aren't riding the buses on Mondays and Wednesdays anymore. So they're coming to see me sometime next week. Alma, my impression was they weren't there, so that's interesting. My impression was that Via replaced that here in Westboro as part of their program. And then there's that. So, yeah, it was kind of a pointed email, like, why aren't you using it so well? Because I was told it wasn't happening anymore, so, yeah. So I'll find out. Well, one of the challenges with the W R T A, the bus system, is it's a loop system, right? You have to physically be able to get from here to wherever and, you know, it's one thing to get there, it's another thing to get from there to home, new groceries or anything else, right? Let alone, you know... Well, yeah, so this was part of the W R T A needs to provide some form of transportation to the town of Westboro since we're paying them, is your thing. So the Monday and Wednesday were medical trips, mostly sometimes social security or whatever, to Worcester. On Mondays and Wednesdays, if people could make, you know, they could make their own appointments and stuff. And like I said, after, and people called and they were told, no, they don't do that anymore. So it's not like they made that up. I look forward to the afternoon. I know, I was kind of excited when I read the email myself, but, anyway. Okay.
So would you consider a much in line to introduce people to the Via? Something like that, like this guy's a good introduction. Maybe if we did training, like we have to be on a one-by-one, but maybe if they take the Worcester...
And we know when it's starting that we do it, but, yeah, that's fine. Like I said, we do give the information to people. But some people like to dance, but they don't do apps and technology and stuff. They're just dumb and they don't have a daughter and all that, it's upstairs, so... What I'm saying, even if you didn't, like, I think awareness, hey, you know, daughter, son, there's this app thing, can you help me with it? You know, again, I'm not saying everyone would do that. I've just been saying that until we, to, it's like anything, you have to tell people something, like, what is the number, like, five, six, seven times before that person's in. And so, by the way, town meeting is Saturday, you know, is, you know, March twenty-fifth. That's the second town today, so... If I still have a driver that's alive and functioning by March twenty-fifth, we will have a bus on the road for town meeting. Okay, for those of you who came into the office earlier, you almost tripped over, the projection screen was delivered today, like literally ten minutes before the meeting. So it's here, so we're gonna try to get it up on the wall this week. And that should make breakfast with the chief next week a little easier because I'm sure that Amber and Christie will have all sorts of fun things to project up there. And, yeah, it's kind of exciting. When the guy walked in with it, it's like, he was walking and it just kept coming and coming.
So who's on the other end?
I don't know, but we don't, I'm delighted because it's about four weeks ahead of time. So we're happy about that, so...
Came from Detroit.
Yeah, I'm not sure where it came from, but New York City, I think, but anyway. The cameras have been installed in buildings. Currently, they are not operational as such. We had some pushback from the group that meets here on Sunday morning about the cameras getting in the building. Kim and I talked about that too. And certainly, I'm certainly not in favor of shutting the cameras off when they're here. There is, that's sometimes been a problem in the past. And Kim is gonna look into what the post-it on the door need to be. Honestly, nobody's said a word to me about it. They're there and they're there and people know they're here, but nobody's gotten upset about it yet. So hopefully, within the next few days, that will be resolved. But like I said, I'm not, I'm not inclined to shut them off on the weekend. And it's, it's not like anybody's watching. Like I can access it going back, but it's not like anybody's sitting in a room, you know, like the Secret Service or something, watching everything that's going on in the world all the time. Anyway, so we're working on that. Yeah. Interestingly enough, so did you all notice the doors? Did the paint that's peeling off all our doors? So it's Sunday morning after the frigid frost, whatever we call it. They had a kind of game for them to do after the... Rose McGovern or something like that, but anyway. So Sunday morning, I actually know someone who comes to the group on Sunday morning and he texted me a picture and said, "What happened to your door?" And it was just the one out by the kitchen. And I'm thinking, what? How did that happen? And I'm thinking, it can't be, I mean, what kid was outstripping, painted off a door? And it was two hundred degrees below zero over the weekend. Like, it didn't make any sense. Well, then when we got here Monday morning, it's this door, it's the door in the back of the kitchen that's got the screen door, the one going out to the parking lot and the one that goes out to the garden. And interestingly enough, it's all the paint being off in circles. So someone who's more knowledgeable about these things than I said, because the doors are hollow, the inside was very warm because we kept the heat on in here in case we had to open as a shelter. And the outside of the door got really cold really fast. And the wind up here, because we're the highest point on the property, was probably blowing seventy, eighty miles an hour. But I just, it was just really interesting when you walk in, you saw the door and it was all circles. Like it was, it was a phenomenon. So the doors will get painted once it gets to be, you know, over fifty degrees away. That's today. Well, I had said to Jim, I was thinking we needed to get them all painted again this spring anyway because I was starting to look to it from me. So I said, "Don't worry about it, we can live with it this way until April or so." Yeah, but it was kind of interesting. But the door, the farthest door, if you look, there's a shrub, but it's sort of on a trunk. And it came out on the bottom, not on the top of the door, so it got some protection from that shrub. And then the door, the back door, that just like peeled off everywhere. And the one in the kitchen, all the, all the paint was on the ground between the screen door and the... Yeah, it was very strange. And then this one just, was kind of just chipping off and...
So in the future, will you market certified?
Yeah, I guess we do. Somebody said, "Well, it wasn't, it wasn't primed." I said, "Yes, it was primed because the other side of the paint, the red, the maroon paint that came off was gray. It was primed, so..." So we need a high school kid that needs community service or something to come up and start to do the paint off, or do it.
Are the outside communities, do we have any?
No, we don't have any outside yet. But that's also kind of, and I spoke to the fire chief about that. He was working on something to, that for all the time I was on the streets. Well, we've got some activity, just nothing that, you know, and the police are really good. There have been a couple nights when I've left here and I've gone out and there's been a car in the parking lot and I'm like, I don't really feel comfortable walking out there by myself. I'm not following it, I'm like, it's sitting in the parking lot, which I appreciate. We've definitely had some shenanigans up here, but not recently. So we'll find... So, we'll find out next time they go up on the roof, if there's weird things up there, then we got more balls. Even if I have to go up on the roof. Let's go, cut it up.
Alma was kind enough to forward to me an email that she received. It was sent to, by one of the board members here today. And he, this particular individual feels that the town clerk is not following the guidance of the town's committee handbook, nor best practices, particularly in regard to distributing the agenda and draft minutes ahead of meetings. The officials have come up for the hall. I'm grateful that Alma forwarded the email to me. Email address is on here, it came from Alma, not from sender. And then this person took time to express their concerns. For instance, the information has to be published, hung at the post of the town clerk's at least 48 hours in advance of our meeting. All these reasons, except that one time I forgot to, still do that. He's asked, the person is asking for the timeline, et cetera and so forth, and include disclaimer that all times are estimates and subject to change. And they should be distributing the agenda to committee members at least two business days in advance. Well, I know from a fact, I've been sitting on this board for a while now, that you could come in on the Wednesday before the meeting and pick up the agenda, the secretaries' minutes, et cetera, et so forth. And it is my hope, and it is my belief, that has been done and has worked well. This person feels that minutes must be kept in accordance with open meeting laws, which they are. We are complying to town rules and regulations. I took the, I asked Alma, please, I had town rules and regulations, she could print them out, and you should all have in your packet, the manual and the information that we refer, that's a question. The other thing I think is very important for people to know is that not all members of this committee have a computer. But that's, you know, that is their choice, they do not have a computer. And most of us are in and out of here during the week. We come in, we set tables, we pass hours, we do, et cetera and so forth. And this meeting is not intended to be the only time you come through the door in the month. There are many, many things that we all help with. We have a representative, a liaison, to the supporters group. John, he's very capable, and the senators, and reporting back to us. So I, I really would like to hear other people's opinions on this. I personally feel that we are complying with the rules and regulations of this committee. I do not make the decision. I have a manual that we've referred to, and I believe that, oops, it's one.
So I have to, I have to ask Bill this. When you came on council, did you have a copy of the committee handbook in your packet that I did? You did? Okay, all right, I couldn't remember if I put it in there.
So, I, I am concerned. I'd like to know what other people feel about it. I personally don't need stuff highlighted in red in an email or a note or a letter unless it's a crayon pad from one of my great grandchildren, you know, so forth and so on, but. I just would like to put this out there for our discussion, how people feel about this. And how would you like this hand to go?
I have a question. We are complying, which question would you answer?
We are complying, but.
So what's the question?
Do you want these emails to go with email? Are you happy to continue coming in and out? I just don't.
Then you have to remember from yesterday.
Yes. It will be sent. And we all know.
Coming in and picking them up here.
Again, this has come up before, I think there are a number of us here that would like to get email minutes on a monthly basis, and, you know, a week or two before this week, so that there is time to, to review the draft.
I know.
You know, we've done, it's come up, we've discussed it, we haven't done that.
I mean, we've made a definite, we, so, the meeting, the agendas and the posting is always done on Wednesday morning before the meeting. Because trying to do an agenda any farther out than that is kind of, I mean, the stuff happens. And then you're adding stuff, it's not on the agenda and you're getting to talk about that. Thursday morning, at the very latest, your packets are in your boxes, and we've been able to improve the meeting minutes in those for the last, probably, year. They are all back to last January on the town's website now. Owen Page in the Selects Office has been putting them on the website for us, which I appreciate and kind of that it becomes a function. I mean, certainly, if you want to do this differently, you can figure it out, but for right now, I'm still, we have a meeting.
Alma, can I just, many boards and committees do have, in some cases, people prefer to come in and pick up a packet, which is fine. But it's really a simple process to scan the materials that are in that paper packet and have them available electronically or whatever you wish. You also then create a record that is easy to store, because part of the open meeting law, public records, you are required to have all of the materials that were used during the meeting available. And personally, I found that an easy way is to create the packet, scan it, you've got it saved if you ever get a request, but that is also very easy to distribute by email. And that's just, I think, most boards and committees have gone that route. Doesn't mean folks who still want to come in and get it can't do so. It just facilitates the opportunity for those who can to have it ahead of the meeting. And I think that's really the intent of some of what we were working for in the committee handbook, and then the committee's.
So what about the people who don't have a computer? I mean, I have a computer, so it's easy enough.
Exactly, and I think we need to give consideration to. He's definitely not.
They could still come in and get it. What I said was the packet could still be available in hard copy, and it really, it doesn't change that aspect of it for somebody who still wants to get it in hard copy. But anybody who doesn't want to make a trip in or isn't able to make a trip in to get it can still have the packet ahead of time.
I mean, I have been known in the past to come in at day of the meeting at quarter 12 and go find some place and sit and read the minutes before the meeting. Is that ideal? No, but I'm in an idea previously, and I don't always remember to just go in to my mailbox, I'll admit. I've done that, but I felt because this person took the time to do this, and it's my understanding that he met with officials from the town, so, before he said anything to us about it. But this is kind of, I'm in uncharted territory here. I almost felt like I was blindsided a little bit, but I'm a big pro, and that's not the issue. My issue with my concerns is the people that don't have computers.
So just since that was mentioned, so, let's just, while we, I look in the room, so Phil was the one that raised it to my attention. It really came out as part of a broader discussion, just, it was about the survey and questions around that. And it was really a long process, and so that was an opportunity for me to make sure he was aware of the committee handbook. Everyone's been notified it's on a board or committee, that it exists. I read it initially in draft form, I read it when it went final, I haven't revisited it, now I'm a chair of a committee and so on and so. So it's one of those things that I think we all do is just remember that it exists and make sure we're familiar with it, because we do have responsibilities as board members of committees that represent the residents of this town. I think that the digitization of data, I can't stress upon this committee enough the importance of what Kim had shared in terms of scanning a packet, because we have, so, I will also, I will back up and say the adding of those documents to the town's website, all the minutes from this committee and the agendas, really came at my request. Because I was like, hey, I need to catch up, because I haven't been to some meetings. And I was like, where are all the agendas and minutes? And they could not be found, and they're not on the town's website. Now, I could have gone to the town clerk or come here and said, could someone print those off? But that is not the way that I manage my time and effort best, and more, more data. And so Owen was kind enough to, to give him Christie to get those up there, so, which is great, right? And it's the same reason why you're recording meetings now, because you want to be able to share the information, share more value. So scanning the information just makes it sort of, you create two branches on the tree, right? For those that want to come in and get a printed copy, come in and get a printed copy. Because the way they're doing it, it's by Thursday, that sounds like, that's a very reasonable time. I mean, as a board member, I have a meeting on Tuesday, I get my packet on Friday or Saturday, depending upon, that's reasonable, right? And you don't want to print it out too early. But for people that want digital copies, they too, in my opinion, shouldn't have access to digital copies. Particularly, you know, people travel, they're away for the weekend, they can't come in here and get it. They shouldn't have to come in and like scramble to read their packet. I would personally find that very frustrating as a committee. And I don't want to speak for Phil, because he's not here, but that's kind of what I heard of, like, you know, I just want to be able to, I want to be a member, be able to get it, and I shouldn't just have to get it in paper. So I don't think it's, it's, it's not this way versus that way, I think it's both ways, both paths on the tree. So, thank you for your opportunity, but I have any answering questions?
So if we have to disengender the minutes here in a way, because in most of the town, you have to, but there are some towns.
So let me be clear. Yeah, but the meeting, the meeting, the meeting minutes don't go up on the website till after we, after. So, so let me be clear. So first of all, what I want, doesn't matter. I'm not a member of committee, I only have the privilege to speak through the chair right now, and, and I'm just giving you sort of my insight because I have a 460-page document in my inbox that I'm working through now as a select board member, right? So if I got that every day, I might as well go plant some trees, right? So that's the other reason why I don't like all the paper. Absolutely, minutes have to be approved by the committee, and then they're supposed to be posted at a reasonable time. And you post it, by the way, technically, is with the town clerk. Electronic posting is not a mass general law requirement. But if this committee wants people to know what's going on and operate for transparency and get people engaged, which I believe is generally the consensus of any board, then that's a great way to do it. So you give it to town clerk, and then it's almost, I'm sure, could scan it, you scan a PDF, and you post it to, I do it all the time for committee and chair of, as the Hakamaka to me. I log into the website, I upload the agenda, I upload the minutes, once they've been approved, it takes me about five minutes. It's not hard to do it, truly, it's not hard to do it. I'm not saying anyone here necessarily has to be, you know, Alma would have to ask permission, or someone would have to permission to do it, it's really hard. But then it's, then it's there, and it's available, so.
So if you need to accept this meeting, if you scan it.
Yep.
It's really loud. Sorry, could you scan it?
Yeah, but it would only, so if it was seen, it would only go to you, Diana, it wouldn't go, it wouldn't be a public document at that point. It would just be to council members. The thing that you all have to remember, please, is that you need to bring them with you. Otherwise, I'd be embarrassed to work, because why put them together in paper if you already got them electronically? And that's, like, I don't. Just so you know, minutes, the moment they are created, whether they are approved or not, are official public records. So the minutes that Nancy presented to all of you, and then you had a discussion before you guys even offered your opinion on them to edit them, they were a matter of public record. Now, they weren't available to any of you on this room, but they could be submitted as, you know, not approved, but minutes of a meeting that's approved. But you don't, you only have to post them until they're approved. That, that is, so you guys could, it doesn't disrupt your process at all. You come to your meeting, so next month, you're gonna come to your meeting, you're gonna review the meeting from minutes from February 12th, you're gonna make any changes that you need, and then who is, I don't know, who's responsible? Nancy, so Nancy makes the changes, and then that final document gets provided to the town clerk and is stamped as posted.
I usually do that when they're prepared.
Yeah, yeah, so then.
I'll make these changes and then.
Right, so it's stamped as posted.
Wednesday I'll have it together.
Right, so as soon as those, now the changes are done for what is your January meeting, that just gets scanned in as what's called a PDF, and it's available electronically. So, and again, even if you're doing it for an upcoming meeting, you can still print out. We used to do this for select board members, there are select board members, I want my paper packet. Most of us don't, but that's okay, like, you know what I mean? So to all this point, I like it personally, because I can't read stuff. Whatever, whatever you all want to do is perfectly fine with me, you know. I just, I just felt very, I sort of felt intimidated, like I got blindsided by this, like, there's so many other things that are going on that pay attention.
This wasn't I on.
I just kind of feel like, um, break and change. You know, you should, you should come to the chair person, you should discuss, you know, to select, you know. Avoid, I think it was a break and change. I think it was, I think it was someone looking for a resource, it was, it was well-intended, it was a great conversation. This is not the first round conversation I've had with other members of committees saying, how would you handle this? And this person did this very respectfully, very respectfully. In fact, I said, because I'm all about transparency and maybe less of a chain of command, quite honestly, I said, have a conversation, if you have a conversation with the liaison, is, you know, and they know the assistant town manager attends those meetings, she's been. town manager attends those meetings, she's been there more than I have. And we said, no, I want to have a conversation with our, with the director first and then get some guidance from the chair. So I can, well, it's honor. I can tell you that it was done with utmost, like, cooperation and then the better, the betterment, if you will, of this committee as it relates to the town.
If you're going to do it the first time and discuss it.
And I'm not for you.
So we're in, we're involved.
Yeah, yeah, we all do a little bit. If you don't, if you don't become, you become extinct, right?
You know, it seems like one of them.
So if I may, it seems as though we've discussed this all over the world, especially when the, when the book was, uh, put in the air. But I might just make this comment that, um, it is not a, it's not a, uh, I'm all set, you know, probably, you know. I'm not computer shabby or no need to, or I don't need to, you know, I'm not a, but I would no more want to assume that I'd want to have a team thinking and thinking about the rest. So I think we don't need to change personally. The recommendation you can give, you can either pick it up or in favor or call a question or do that. So the question, where do you, where do you require it to town hall? Somebody wants to go to the, uh, where do they have to pay for?
The town clerk's office. So when they post the meeting, like when I send them on Wednesday morning, the thing that says we're meeting at one o'clock on the, I don't even know what today's date is, thirteenth of February here, and I send the agenda along with it, which is on the fifth of December, um, where this, does that go online someplace? No. So it goes, so it goes in the clerk's paper, gets stamped the moment they get it. Alma gets a confirmation received. It's automatic almost from the town clerk's office and that goes in their paper file. In order for it to be posted, um, to, um, the, uh, let me, let me stay important. As it relates to agendas, it goes on the town's calendar. So if you guys see the town's calendar on the website?
Yeah.
Well, if you have a, it all goes there. So your agendas go there, but minutes do not. But to get to your council on aging page on the website, like your own personal folder that your constituents, so to speak, are interested in, someone has to have permission to post it there. So that could be Alma, it could be a member of, uh, Kurt Hartman, it could be a member of this committee if they were so comfortable with it. As an example, I'm chair of another committee, I'm the only one that has access to that and I post the agendas and minutes to that particular committee. So it is another step. We're working on that, kind of as part of, as we evolve here for it. But if someone outside of this committee wants a copy of the agenda, they can go to town hall or they could come here to Alma and say, I want a copy of it or a copy of the minutes.
If a person, you know, you send a contact to town hall and it's been requested, you have a problem.
So that's a great question. I think if there were a repeated request, they'd probably get tired of it because of the number of boards and committees, which is why if it were just posted to that page, like the council and we do using this example page, they'd be like, oh, it's actually on their page, you can go right there and get, and print the walking script.
If the minutes are posted on the, uh, not on, on the council on aging website, it's on the generic minutes website. You go to the, on the bottom of the town, uh, every place in the town website, there's a, there's a minutes area, like the alerts that you get an alert, it's approved on there. But you can get, go to the minutes, uh, it brings you a page that has all the committees in town that have their minutes posted. One of them is the senior senator or senior councilor. You click on that and it gives you all of the, uh, minutes.
Every board of committee, well, almost every board of committee that needs, that's the, you know.
And so that, anybody can go get that because they're, they're on there. But after they've been approved here, and how, how they get there, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I know they're there because I've been looking at them.
There are a couple of steps behind the Wizard of Oz scene that happened. It is not, it is not complicated. As, as members of the committee, again, I think it's, you can continue to get information through your paper or you could implement a process where a, a digital copy could be made available in person front.
But it's our draft copy that I'm, uh, concerned about. I mean, that's what I'm both wanting to get unit there so that things like the smog we, going through with some type of, because that, firstly, it's been handled, uh, you know, weeks earlier so that by the time, uh, we come to this committee, we have a clue, uh, to, to look at.
And I can't do it this week, now they have to do it next week, yeah.
And I can, we can work on that. It's, it's, I'm, I'm, if I, you shall be prepared to ask a question.
In this packet, it speaks about, I put my hand out like a snake, but, um, you need a separate email if it's going to the members of the board or whatever?
So, yeah, so that was explained to me. I can set up, through the town, I can set up any mail that will go to all of you, your personal emails. Don't need to get a town email. However, you do need to understand that it's not, it's not a public document. That's the other piece of that, that's what I was told. Let me, let me be clear. Even if you're using, let's say Cathy at, you know, Cathy Saylor, I don't know whatever password it's in.
That's very.
Cathy Saylor, no, anyway, I wasn't using her last name, at gmail dot com. If she's using that in any capacity for council on aging related business, that is a public record from that email. Even though it's her, it's her personal email. Just to be clear. So, so when I became a select board member, that was around the time of, well, I'll remember someone by the name of Hillary Clinton, not to be political and some email problems she had, I made the distinct decision right then and there not to use my work email, even though it's the one I used all the time and I created a new email address because I wanted a very clear separation for my personal life and my town life. As a public official. So just to be clear, so, so you could use, but what, what the town does for me is I have a Shelby that Westboro, whatever, and it gets forwarded, not to be too technical, to my Gmail address. So it's transparent if anyone emails it unless it gets, cut junk mail. Good story. But, but, um, but that could be set up. So if someone said, jeez, I really want to kind of try this, um, that is an option that can be set up for you.
Set up?
It could be set up for you as an individual to have a, a, an email that is generated that, that is town related, that is forwarded, that you use exclusively or, and/or which is forwarded to your, you know, let's say it's Judge Act.
So, uh, does that mean my whole computer is entirely public?
So that's a great question. Theoretically, theoretically, if someone wanted to do some deep, big, deep dive, they could, they could say you need to look in your whole computer. And I, so like I thought it, right? Like, and I wasn't about to go out and buy a new computer just for my town stuff. So I, you know, I have it organized and, you know, I'm a good ethical person. So I'm like, if you want to look in all the other stuff, you can, but there's no town stuff.
And all my food stuff, like, if you go outside, something.
I mean, again, you gotta, there's, there's an element here of like, you know, we're not talking about FBI secrets, right? So the chances of someone saying, I'm going to take your computer and like scrub it and to look at it. But by the letter of the law, if there was an investigation of some sort.
Yes, or a, or a, or a questioning.
I mean, yeah. So it does, it, you know, if you're going beyond the paper, it creates a trail, but the trail is also really good for public engagement and transparency. Because otherwise, how do people know what all your good work is?
So, uh, yes, a good question. Will we, we sort of, I'm sure, you know, uh, forward.
No, I'd, I'd have, I'd have to set that up with Marco also. Right. It can be done, yes.
So we, you will be, if you want to.
If the problem is how we get related electronic engagement that is sent out.
So.
And you'll leave them a pass out of that. That's all we want. I'm just going to pick up a paper. I'm like, what can I say?
I love that.
No, I, I, my life is enough complications. I'm just going to deal with paper.
And even if you kept your own personal email address, but you just had, excuse me, this in an electronic copy, they could just get, when people get them in their boxes, the electronic copy could be emailed to whoever uses their email address to, um, it's really as simple as that. You don't have to ask for a town email address or anything, it's just a way of proceeding. And then when you go skiing for the weekend and it's really cold, you have it on your laptop to read. But you're not out there skiing because it's really too cold.
That's right. You're really having a hot shot.
Yes.
So, uh, so why didn't I solve the problem?
Well, it would, I just.
I mean, if.
Not so.
If Rio and I both wanted to have.
That's fine. I'll figure, I'll talk to, well, to Mark tomorrow and I'll figure out how to do that for him. It's fine.
And then how should we watch, see what happens?
Well, there'll still be paper copies in your mailbox, you know. And you can email the minutes to, to get some down and that's fine.
So we have problems, you know?
We're really talking about multiple, uh, situations here, but it can be solved, it is, I think.
So it wants to be sent around. But we need to figure out whether to avoid.
That would be helpful.
More people.
But I don't, I'm not holding out, I hold on all that one, so I'm going to end up printing it anyway, so. But you can try it for a while, you can track, you can vote, you can have both the paper process, right? Everyone's got to get it until folks are comfortable with whoever wants to, uh, you know, getting your email and like, hey, you know, you don't need to give me a copy anymore. I'm good, I'm comfortable with the processes working and getting all the handouts. But there always could be something that is supplemental to what you got on your packet on Friday, right? That gets dropped in now Monday morning. So paper is sort of inevitable, right? So, but at, but at least you have, you know, you do, you're going to make the meetings more efficient because folks have read the minutes, for example, beforehand and they can quickly say, rather than maybe getting the right book to sell.
Really only the minutes, the draft minutes that I'm, the rest of the material.
But even, even the other material, I mean, like, I mean, how long is that committee document? Twenty nine pages?
Oh, when they, when, when that first came out, everybody got a copy of that. And then when new members have gone, that's why I asked you if you got one, because he got one, thrown up one too. So when new members went on the board and goes in their initial packet that they get, they have the job descriptions and the budgets and all the.
But let's say you wanted to provide everyone a copy of the, we talked about the capital expenditure process and committee and, like, I don't even know how many pages it is, but let's say it's more than twelve, right? Getting that, you know, coming in and being like, oh, I've got a meeting in an hour, that's a lot to digest, right? So getting that packet, whether it's digital or in paper in advance, you know, is, I think it's just to make you all more, you know, kind of efficient, effective committee. If you're not effective, yeah, just put in more. So I reached a decision that we'll try this.
We don't, we're all. We both continue to receive our paper.
Yeah, and then you'll, you know it, you know that meeting is to whoever wants it.
Which it ends now and it's.
Um, yeah, we probably are. But we spend time in lots of bunch of meetings.
Well, I think, uh, that in a person's world, like, you know, if I think this, I wish you had.
All right, so we are, for the first time, maybe the second time, but I think the first time is maybe more limited for you three as well. Um, we are looking at some shortfalls particularly because of the amount of money that we're going to need for repairing bus. And to make it clear, the money that is given to us very specifically is to put in purchasing the bus, not to repair any of that. So that's not even on the table. I don't have a problem going in front of, um, if it's going to be asked for a transfer. I'm going to try to get, um, some, uh, all of these figures together over the next couple months. We can, we can work at a deficit, but it will, um, which we won't, but it's okay. But I will, um, by the time, by the time we meet in March, I should have all the rest of the bills for all the rest of this and then try to figure out what else we might need for April, May and June going forward with these vehicles and hope that they don't, hope that nothing else happens. And keep in mind too, like Lynn had said, the, the two buses, the two, bus number one and bus number two, those are well past five years old at this point, so it's simple. And we didn't expect the law. Um, so I will get those figures together and, um, make an appointment to go see, uh, the finance committee, probably after town. Explain why we, we, some of my, I think my track record is still pretty good. Forty years, but I'm twice as good. And, um, but just to add a bright spot in all of this, um, that's with this kind of a rough leap and I got an open email addressed to me and I opened it up and there was a lovely check for ten thousand dollars in there for the senior senator.
Wow!
I hope you had another one too.
I know, I was, listen, that would be great. Um, okay. I forgot, I, and I apologize for this. So, um, Kim and I worked together, um, because we were looking to replace Fred, um, with another CBL driver. Kevin Farah has come back to work for us, which is why we haven't promised the island saying, we need to take your bus. But Kevin started working for us, um, the day the mother moved on the other bus. But he, you know, he's, he's pretty good there. He didn't work for all three of them, but, um, he's back on board with us and very happy about that. Franny unfortunately can't be driving right now because he doesn't have a CBL and you can't, I don't have a best friend to drive, so it's that. Um, we had a little bit of a hiccup with SMOCK. I had an email chain going with my colleagues in our area a couple of weeks ago. Everybody's just really frustrated with SMOCK, their lack of communication, their lack of, like, getting back to people and just, it's been ridiculous. And everybody's frustrated, seniors are getting scared. And we talked about it was going to be frigid and freezing, um, people really got scared. People with gas and electric, not as much because they can't get shut off, but they're concerned because their bills are getting higher. People who need oil are concerned because they just don't have the money to pay for an oil delivery. Um, we've been able to help a couple of people out, um, but it's very scary. So the directors decided that, that following week we would all make calls to our state legislatures and some of the money that comes from, um... Some of the money that comes from, um, the facilities is coming through the state. It's not all federal money. So, I did call Senator Moore's office on Tuesday or Wednesday. And, um, I had included that in my report to the selectmen that, you know, we were just getting really frustrated with this because the process has become ridiculous, so slow. People aren't getting certified or they're getting letters saying that they are missing all sorts of information. And I can tell you for a fact that I don't even mail it until every piece of documentation is, isn't that, isn't that? I don't do it. I'll hold on to it for a few days, get in a couple of days to get back to me. I don't mail it unless it's complete because I know that that just adds more time onto it as they wait for it. I have one woman who came into city one day. She basically had to start from scratch, even though it was a recertification for her because they lost everything. They had no record of her application ever getting there and she had sent it mid-September. She's a school teacher. She had sent it like right around the time she went back to school. So, we had basically start from scratch and did up all that stuff because she called it and they said, oh, we don't have any record to do the applying. So, that's the kind of stuff that people are getting if they can actually get through somebody. So, when I included it on that, I got a, um, an email from Christie asking like how this whole process worked and would it be helpful if the selectmen, um, hopped out and wrote a letter to Senator Moore's office? I said, it, it probably wouldn't hurt. I don't know how much it'll help. I, after talking to the senator's office the next day, I got an email from his chief of staff saying that she had tried to, um, get, get ahold of SMOCK and has gotten no response and she wouldn't go and she didn't, I haven't recovered. So, they're not even responding to our letters. Like, it's at this point, you know, they're not talking March before the meeting is gonna be held. So, um, I did, I mean, I've been doing this, I've been here for forty years and I did it at my last job for at least three or four years before that. I had, it's gotten progressively worse, but this is the worst here. Because they're just not, I don't, they're not even back in office yet from what I've been told. They're still working remotely. I don't know what that means. So, um, I, I, you know, I feel for these people and I, like I said, we help them we can, but it's gotten to the point where I don't know what the next step is gonna be, so.
They're not sitting in the hall, are they, too?
They're, no. Unless they get ahold of the person running the board, I don't know. And I've even tried that because I have a family member. I get a machine. I get a machine. And, you know, justifiably, people are getting scared and they need, you know, thank God that the price of oil wouldn't go up to eight or nine or ten dollars a gallon like it is at it this time. But still, it's not cheap, so. So, if you hear from people who are in a situation, um, you know, the same thing I can say, the more we get in contact with our legislators and let them know about this, maybe they can put some of that pressure on somebody somewhere to make this thing work better than it is right now. But, I guess I, I've never seen it be this bad, ever. So, even during the pandemic, it worked better than this. Yeah. Um, the, um, Stephanie and I, Stephanie and I are talking about, um, getting our memory cafe back up and running. Probably either end of April or May sometime. Um, there's, uh, new people in us, uh, that they're gonna support for, which I'm delighted about. Although sometimes it's just sad that I can't take it at ten o'clock in the morning, but, um, you know, most of these people, they, they learn from each other, they share with each other. Um, you know, there's great information, but it's, it's just sad sometimes, but it is a reason to handle diseases and pretty good. None of you are, are pettling me about that. And, um, so we'll be doing our memory cafe Monday month, um, getting it into, um, the schedule with the others. There's another program called Daybreak Gets A味, the name is Marlborough North, uh, Edson, which is a, um, longer day sort of a little respite day program, which I would love to be able to do here, but I don't find the staff or the money or the time, or, I mean, I, you know, I find the timing, but I just, I don't have the staff to be able to accommodate that. But some folks are drawn to those other programs. It's, I think it's fifteen dollars a day. It's, it's a good thing.
What exactly do you describe the?
It's like a, it's like a little respite program. Um, they usually do lunch, um, some activities, um, different, different ice activities, maybe some music, maybe some whatever. I think it's four hours.
Yeah, once a week, once a month?
Once a week.
About half a day, uh, either a person.
The Daybreak Program? No, the Memory Cafe. Yeah, but that's, the Daybreak, it's a program. It's a different program than a Memory Cafe. It probably will be a dream to, 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 to space in there. Um, the R and B program is back up and running. Over two, four volunteers. Michelle Ellis from the registry came out and did a full training with them, um, for several hours a couple of weeks ago. It's on the calendar, it's the first and third, the first and third Tuesdays, they're available by appointment. Um, it's changed a little bit as to what you can do, um, when you originally had the program. Um, and as soon as I get the second bus back, we will offer rides to the registry. Um, they have a senior hour in the morning, um, and we are, because we've had, we've had several people that want to, they, they've given up their license, but they wanna go in the D or realize D, so. And as soon as we get another bus back, then we will be offering like we used to do, which is great. Um, updating on program services, but can, see if I read it too far or if you have somewhere that you remember. Um, we, so I just finished writing the annual report for the town. I've been very happily report to you that we provided six thousand and nineteen rides last year. Um, eighty-two percent of the people who walk through to it, eighty percent of the people who walk in the door here come from Westboro. And we're happy with that. Um, we definitely are seeing our numbers going up as far as participation. Um, but we're, you know, we're kind of building back from pandemic. We now have a brand new cheer yoga teacher starting in Winston, Maryland. Um, our line dance team, we need to work on that a little bit, but he's, he's kind of cool. I kind of like him. I could almost maybe learn how to line dance with him. So, all of our instructors are back or have been replaced the ones that we lost. So, it's, you know, like I said, we're, we're, we're gonna be able to send you people coming tomorrow for, um, the Valentine's party. And I, how many people do we have in our season, you know?
There's at least fifty-five.
Yeah, it's huge, huge. I'm hoping as, I'm hoping as many people are coming in March because it's very soon, but that's my own.
I have a question.
Yes.
These sixteen thousand people who have provided participation, is that, is that any transportation on bus or?
No, we provided six thousand nineteen trips on our bus in the calendar year of January to December, which is a lot.
Good job.
Mary Ellen's volunteers. I have to, I, I would ask her to put that together. We actually have been talking in the office about, um, we do have some handheld, um, counter things for the, the My Senior Center, which we got literally a month before the pandemic. So, we haven't used, but we do have the ability to do that. So, we're looking at, um, being able to access some of that information. We've also made sure that all of our regular volunteers all have cards, so when they come in, um, to deliver caregiving dinners or deliveries on wheels or whatever they're there for, that they can check in so that they're counted and they're on these travelings. So, we're, we're, we're evolving. Good work, Danny. We're getting there. So. So, that's, like I said, we're moving forward. Um, we have had some, we've already, people have already asked me about shredding, which is the very end of the ball. Like, just be patient, we're playing lots of things. Um, our painting teacher comes back this week, next week. She's back. Um, the reason we're having tuna fish for bread and soda too is because it's hash brown instead. Um, porky lunches have gotten huge. Um, this, you all make all those salads for the test too. Um, it has nothing to do with pork as it has to do with pizza. I've come to the conclusion, it's the pizza, it's not the. Uh, yeah, the pepperoni pizza in particular. Um, like I said, we're Senator Moore, um, who's, we have been doing regular, um, office hours here every month. The AARP people, bless their hearts. So, the first day they came in here was February third. They had a full calendar for the day and there was nobody in this room. So, they moved to the spare tables down the side of that, I mean, they, they were fine. I mean, nobody was upset about those. You know, and, uh, yeah. And like I said, we have a new chair, yoga teacher. So, we have, St. Patrick's Day party is on Wednesday, March fifteenth. Um, Mary Ellen's got some, uh, trips, day trips, Bermuda trips, long trips. She's been working with, um, best of times for those. So, it's all, it's. And the Boy Scouts for the Seventh is on the forefront. Here. It's interesting that you say that because I actually spoke to a police officer about that. Not too long ago, they were putting something together. And we was gonna have that, talk to them, and we wanted a female officer, so we just did it for them. And then we've also been asked to do the CPR class again. Oh, I didn't know about that. Um, but we've been asked to do that again, so. Look at that, um, too, because I think the people who took that class, I mean, they, they just never know it and you really don't.
What other thing that has scam education, you used to have those once a year. Have the folks that have to talk about, uh, how to avoid scams. And they did, I would dig up to, like, that we should, uh, maybe to try to do something like that again if you can.
Yeah. I think I've had every place, James and Sarah Shepard say, the better we get at it, the smarter they get.
Good, but.
It's really, it's really frightening. We're just, listen, so we, so I was at my mom's on Saturday, Friday, for a little while. And just while I was there, which was probably an hour maybe, she got two phone calls from bizarre places she'd never some store on Nantucket and so I, it was just, it's like, I said to her, she goes, oh, I don't need to answer. She goes, it rings up that all day. And she's on the do not call registry, so I, I don't think that really makes any difference anymore as well. Yeah. But the thing you said, you all know enough not to pick up the phone in the age. Some people just, they just check. I'm amazed how many calls I get when I, when I get from home on a day.
You know, if you get a call, what will trigger conversations? So, how?
Yeah.
So, if you say apple or banana or tomato, it's not gonna trigger.
So, do you use that?
I use it all the time.
It's the worst.
Well, I have definitely apples.
Oh, sure. Or you can just answer the phone and say, Westboro Police Department can help you.
I'm on, I'm on no callers, which is three hundred. And, uh, and they block three hundred. But now these people are smart because they're usually calling their cell phone.
But they're also, I put, uh, children, maybe, you know, maybe can, is that they use your number, so.
They spoof it. They can put any number they want, I know that.
Yeah, so you can, I mean, it's, it's really odd. For those who text, you get the, there's a problem with your Amazon account, there's a problem, don't believe it. Yeah, well, I delete it. I fear Amazon knows how to find me the way, you know, but it's hard because it looks really legitimate. And it's just like here and then now all of a sudden. All the guests, I, I, there were two concerners on last Sunday. I was told that one of them would be delivered Monday and the other one would be delivered on March third. So, then I got the next, um, Tuesday morning, I got a confirmation that they would be there on Wednesday. But Tuesday afternoon, I got a letter from Amazon telling me that they can't, um, access my account, twelve lot, and the vehicle last four digits. Except that that part has been compromised and I don't have that, so I knew it wasn't legit, but it's like, it looked real like it was. It was a lot of time. Oh, yeah, yeah. So, I, I, like I said, the smarter we get, the smarter they get. So, I, I, we just need to really be careful about that and all that stuff you get in the mail. Just stick it in the box to shred it when it comes up. I, yeah. Anytime somebody in my neighborhood sells a house, I get stuff from any real term, Blackstone Valley, a lot. Oh, jeez. Um, if you're not signed up to come to the party tomorrow, I'm sorry. It's up to Guido and Bob if they're gonna come tomorrow or not. No, you answer to that question. I know that's been a pretty long time to come. I asked if she was bringing her Valentine or she was bringing her husband to cheer up, so I.
I'm bringing my husband. Okay. Who may come in focus, but I don't focus it out. He probably will.
What do you do? Get pasta and you know?
Salad and, and our resident amazing baker has been working on cookies all weekend, so. Pretty nice. That nobody wants to eat, but they do, they're not too, so.
Yeah.
And we have, um, the Valentine's coming from one of the classes at Easton School for everybody here. And then we have our, um, she's nervous, so I'm not gonna say.
Oh, we have a wonderful.
You all nervous?
I'm not.
No, we've had seven people every morning. But, but the music's country, the vibe. No, that's all right. We could share.
I can, some people know what it works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd like to come up to tell you, uh, senior group.
Yeah.
So, um, we are not, we're secure of that, you know, you're a, you're a non-person, senior, uh, senior.
Supporters, too.
Supporters, yeah. And, uh, and I've done it and, uh, I've attended multiple, several different conferences. They had an election of offices last month. That the director was not not consistent with their vitalities. So, that board was, they stand. My, uh, my feeling is that the, uh, the senior group, they're wonderful people, they work hard and they're amazing. They deserve the full support of, uh, the Westboro senior center. But, uh, it's been a disarray and I don't know where it's ever gotten to not a disarray, right? There are methods to do it, but I think some five-part industry to do it.
Good time.
Yeah. Ronnie, I know you said, you did, and, uh, there were a lot of, um, hard comments, maybe difficult comments, but I think in the long term, they were constructive. But, uh, I think along the journey, they, they asked me to do it. How do I?
Um, I do know that, I do know that they are, um, putting together a racket founder for the month of April. I do know that, I do know that they are putting together a Rafflet calendar for the month of April, which will be for sale beginning of March as a fundraiser. I have, I have faith that it'll be well done, and it should be about fun. You know, they're talking, they're doing their, um, team, whatever, they, they... So, they are, you know, they have to set the date for the fair though pretty quick because... Well, the November, the November calendar, the master plan is set up, so it's either gotta be before Veterans Day or before Thanksgiving, I don't know the two. It's, Veterans Day actually falls on Saturday, which means we're not here Friday, which means the Veterans Month would be Wednesday, and we need to be in here starting Wednesday. So, that's gonna be the next, next thing which is on the table.
So, another comment. We had a very healthy discussion months ago about what we were doing in the next year. I thought it was a good, good conversation. I think it was a good conversation, but that one time, it was sort of, you know, one of the duties and obligations was like, personally, whatever, on this. And, but I would think that's bad to do, and I have, so I don't know what to do about it. I mean, I went to one meeting that was, it was a long time ago, I don't know if you... Created, what happened, I didn't, it was just probably, I locked out because it was called a free speech. I think that, you know, there has to be some groundwork for what a person would say, uh, say, uh... And make any sense for me, so it's... And I'm not a member, or am I understanding?
No, you can't be, but I also think that the rigid formality of those rules is not necessary. Because it's not, it's not a municipal organization or a government organization. It's, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a charitable organization. And I, and we're not talking millions of dollars, you know, and all that. I don't think that the rules that apply, I mean, obviously, common sense rules are about a means, but I think some of the rigidity of those rules is not necessary. Because it's not the point of the organization. And I think that puts a lot of people off, and I, I, it's, I would try.
Right. People who, who've been trying to remember of that, the, the system, uh, as a board, we need to know the history of what happened in 2000, but we, we need to understand it.
Yeah, my name was in the paper a bunch of times.
Yeah. But we had a person visiting, uh, that I would flash that, and I think he was at the World, I don't know. And so, uh, I think it's, it's in the history, uh, happened to me, to me, how this stuff is happening.
Yeah, I talked to two of the members of that in my office, I do, it's about what happened.
All I'm willing to stay honest, I'm aware of a lot of questions, I'm not, not assuming, um, or, um, we can talk about, try to be an assistant, and I'd like to know the direction for the, for that people to, 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 to.
Do you have a job description for...
I think they've got time.
I'm not up as much as I do today. I'm happy with it. I don't have to... And we also have to remember that despite the fact that they're attached to us, they're a separate entity that has nothing to do with county government, that has nothing to do with, you know, any of that and stuff. It's, it's, you know, they're a privatization, just like the literary club and the friends in the library. I mean, they're attached to us, but they're not, we don't have the ability to control them unless they're out of control. Because there are some laws and rules and regulations they have to follow, and that's one of the problems that came up in 2013, was that they weren't following the rules, and they weren't following the law, and could have very easily brought down a whole, you know, bunch of stuff on top of all of us. But they chose to do what they did, so...
All that history is very important.
Joan, I think one of the best things that we could do for our land is just giving this one to request time under a vendor, but I'm happy to give it to them. You could request it for me, you could give them an update, like, you guys spent a lot of time here talking about, hopefully about transportation and how that's one of the big challenges. So, really just kind of snippets from these meetings and the things that the council is talking about to inform them. They can take whatever action they want to take, or take no action, but, you know...
I agree.
Yeah, well, okay, yeah. And sometimes, yeah, sometimes you...
Walk out.
Yeah, yeah. And sometimes you, you know, sometimes you actively do that and, you know, we all only have something else in the bag.
I know, I did the same, I expect people to have this in their share.
I'm only adjourned.
Is that Thursday?
Our meeting is on, exactly one month from today, on the thirteenth of March, eleven o'clock. No, it's Monday the thirteenth. We have Friday the thirteenth of January, the week of a Friday the thirteenth of January, I guess. Yeah, so I don't think we get another one of those until like August or something.
Nancy, did she get... People would make the motion, and...
I'm sorry, did that happen to you, John, before? Or I must have... Well, we have all the same type of thing.